Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Stallings is not here. Commissioner Orr and Mayor Mason.
Here.
The Coram.
Okay. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda.
It's okay, a couple did.
Nothing? 3.1 Quarterly VDA Update by Mr. Cooper, Mike Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. How's everyone doing? Good to be back as always. We had Advanced Development Authority meeting today, and I know, Mayor, I know you're going to hear a lot of the same things I talked about then, but...
I'll just do this.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Now we're all in the mood. So, talking about our MilCon, well, I'm going to talk about priorities, some of the things that we're working on and where we're at on everything. As you all know, we've been our top number one MilCon project is the Squad Ops facility because it's in temporary facilities now, and we were able to get a earmark this last year. Senator Mullen greatly helped us with that, along with Frank Lucas over in the House and Tom Cole. So we did get that, and so to move things forward, we need at least 30% design needs to be in the Air Force five-year plan before we can have it considered. Either they put it in the President budget to get it done, or we, our delegation works, you know, to try to get a congressional ad. So, anyway, they have not started the engineering design on that yet because there's some things changing with the way they train pilots, aircraft and other methods, and so they know that there's not a need to build quite the size of the facility. In other words, they have four squadrons now, I believe. They'll probably go to two, and so the size and fit of that's a little different. They have given the engineering design, I guess, to headquarters, and so they expect to do that and start that sometime next year. So then that puts us on that timeline. They get the engineering design, and hopefully it gets in the FIDE, and then we move forward on that. So we feel comfortable that that's going, and the engineer, or the Air Force, they know, you know, what plans and methods they want to move forward with, so we're certainly going to be behind them on that as well. And I have briefed our congressional delegation on that because they'd already called about where we're at on this because this is the time of year that you start teeing up things for the next Congress. So that's why this even came up in the first place, even though we followed. So they, Lucas and Mullen have both been briefed on this, where it's at, and I'm sure they'll have more contact with them to get further details on it. Eisenhower School Elementary, as you know, 80-20 split. Defense Department pays 80% of that, and, you know, Dudley Darrow, our superintendent, between the Military Planning Commission and what the school's going to do, we have our 20% ready to go. The first thing has to happen is engineering design work on that. They've been asked from DOD to submit through the portal. They've done that. The holdup at the moment is, was, you know, the Air Force and Department of Defense have to agree on what it is we're going to build. You know, you don't want to build, you know, a college campus when we're building for an elementary school. So they have to determine numbers of students that they support for that. They have now done that. They've given that to the Assistant Secretary of the Air Force for Insulation, Environment and Energy. So I look for, and I visited last week with the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, who works with the SAFIEE's office, to make sure we're all on the same page on what it is we're going to support. We certainly support or expect that now to be handled and then agreed upon so we can move forward on the engineering design. I think probably the next week or two, you're going to hear something from that. So that's moving forward. So that's good. Strategic Military Planning Commission, of course, met here at Woodring Airport last week, talked about a lot of plans. It's very good for a lot of the Commissioners on the Military Planning Commission to have that meeting because they're all brand new. So, and of course, George, very experienced because he's been on Advanced Development Authority, so he knows kind of what their job is on that Military Planning Commission. So they were kind of able to see, because Enid and what we do kind of sets the example. In fact, Military Planning Commission is created after the Advanced Development Authority. So it's very helpful for a lot of the members on there to see some of the things and hear the things that we're doing. Also, the next project that we look to fund from the Military Planning Commission in their next meeting in November, there's going to be additional dollars, say around $200,000 to assist with, to finish, you know, that commitment of $1 million to help with the offset of the Eisenhower School. And then, working with Woodring and Keston, there's going to be a backup generator that is needed because currently, right now, you don't, you lose power out there, he loses operations. So this will be something to take care of, the terminal building and all that first. I know Keston has plans for the other pieces, say the runway and/or the control tower, but that's something you've got to work with through FAA, as I understand. So we'll continue to follow up on that. But those are the two things that will certainly get funded next month, so then we can move forward on doing the generator and then assist the school continue with their funding for their 20% match. We also had dollars, I believe it was from Keston, from the military, or from DCEP for the two-point...
That was P3.
P3, okay. The P3 money that helped us, was going to help us fund the workstation. I would call it a radar that would coordinate with Vance so they could see aircraft better that way. FAA hasn't come up with a solution yet for that, so there's not anything for us to purchase yet, but our time was running out, as I understand it, on holding that money for that project. So another million is going to go to some further south ramp extension at Woodring, and then the state of Oklahoma has asked us, Jeremy Stoner, who runs that P3 initiative, has asked us, would we support the rest of the money for an issue at the Ardmore Airport, which I think it's specifically lighting?
No.
Yeah. So, of course, we said, well, yeah, we'll agree with that, but I didn't know that Vance was using. I talked to Throck Morton out at the base, and he said, well, I wouldn't wear that either, but they do use it some. And of course, you know, we both jokingly said, well, if you're a pilot, any runway is important, so, you know, so that's where that money will be moved. And he's secured, we've secured a letter, so they'll have that, they'll move that letter. But they, I talked to Jeremy Stoner today, and he said, just as soon as you find out the solution on that, we certainly, the state certainly wants to help, help fund that, so just come back to us and we'll get that handled. So we'll wait for that. This morning, the Mayor and I met with wing leadership, and they had a lot of folks out there. They have two projects moving forward for some form of funding, whether it's through DCEP or the state or other things that we, there's some bonding capacity that we'll talk about later, don't need to get into it now. But we took OG&E leadership out there with us. They have a redesign of the network to allow for three redundant feeds as opposed to a single feed to Vance. It includes adding some new structure into the base and probably some other equipment that I don't totally understand but allow switching. And it's something that's good, not just for Vance, but if you look at the east side power station or the west side power station, if we connect all three, if one of them goes down on either side, it actually can be utilized to power up each side of town. So that, that's something not just good for them, that's good for Enid as well. So they're willing to look at that, and so the whole idea with that is to come up with doc, you know, where we, how are we going to fund that? And I think we can come up with a solution for that. Other resiliency project was water. The base, if you've been out at the base in a long time, they've replaced their water tower. They've also removed all the galvanized pipe on the base, so everything now is plastic PVC, but they still have a water issue, chlorine, or the water coming from Metal Lake to there, once it goes through our old galvanized pipe, by the time it gets there, there's not a lot of chlorine left in the water. So the solution is, and to help with increased flow, if we take a water line and take it over to Cleveland and feeds from that, that side, the west side as well, then that helps with redundancy and also helps with flow to the base, but also improves the water. So that's something that we'll also look at. And again, we can either do these through combination of DCEP, P3, there is some bonding capacity that OG&E may have the capability to utilize. So we'll, as we do with any of these projects, we'll always, we'll look for the solution to get that done. One last thing, as you know, there are a couple of things that I stay involved in, whether it's AFA or the Association of Defense Communities, and that's always to stay in contact with leadership, either in Air Force or the Department of Defense. Association of Defense Community has their Installation Innovation Forum at the end of the month in San Antonio, so all of the services will have people there. All the installation secretaries will be there, and their leadership, the Insulation, Environment, Energy Secretaries will be there from all the services. The reason this is important, communities and states go there, hear ways of how to better do things like what we do, or they, I guess, just choose to do nothing, but we, that's why I'm always there, is to make sure I'm in contact with all the folks that we have to reach out to, to do the things that we do. They also always have the Defense Department Clearing House, the Siding Clearing House, all the airspace folks, so anything dealing with any kind of airspace issue coming up or currently what's going on, we hear from the leaders from the Defense Department on that. So with that, unless there's any questions, that's what I got.
Nope, I think so. I think that was good. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate, appreciate what you do. Spent the last couple of days with you, and I know how much you're on the phone and who all you're talking to, and we appreciate you taking care of...
Well, thank you. And I know, you know this, but with Colonel Throck Morton and our new vice over here, we're in good shape. We work real well. There's a lot of good discussions going on, so it's all good.
Good, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Keston, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
No, I can elaborate a little bit on the generator, if you'd like. It's basically what he was saying, terminal building, we lose power out there occasionally, especially as you get into the winter months with the ice storms that we have, and occasionally you get them too during bad thunderstorms in the summer. And so we have to operate old school with, you know, carbon copy of credit cards and that sort of thing. And then thankfully, we do have quite a bit of fuel in our refuelers as well, as long as they're topped up beforehand, but definitely hampers our operations if we lose power. And then the second two priorities was, of course, with the air traffic control tower and their field lighting. If the power is to go out at the airport, the tower is not backed up on any sort of generator. They do have battery backups as required by the FAA, but those battery backups only last about two to three hours. So they operate off of radios for that two to three hour timeline, and then they go off to what they call ATC zero, so basically no air traffic control over the airport. And so that would be one thing greatly hamper our operations, of course, if you don't have any ATC out there. Not a huge deal for some of the smaller GA planes, but a lot of corporate GA doesn't like to go into untowered airports, and military as well does not like to go into untowered airports. Airfield lighting as well, it has, a lot of it is FAA-owned equipment, so you have to abide by the FAA's policies on a lot of those, and it's very expensive to do. The hope is to go before the FAA and ask them to say, you know, here's what we're proposing. We currently have nothing, so take what we can offer you and don't hamper progress. But we'll see what they say. Be happy to answer any other questions about the airport, though.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Keston. 3.2 Discuss Increase in Solid Waste Rates. Mr. Hunter?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're just going to have a little discussion about essentially the state of our solid waste services, and it hasn't had a lot of attention from a financial standpoint in a long time. And we're just going to go over some of the background in that and then some of our suggestion for what we need to do going forward. So, you know, solid waste, unlike the other side general government, it's an enterprise fund. It's run similar to a business. We run on unit costs such as the amount, the number of polycarts that we pick up, the number of additional parts we pick up, the number of tons that come into the landfill. Those are things we can measure, we can kind of extrapolate. And, you know, one thing about this is, that I've experienced coming from Texas is, Enid does not have property tax. I think we're one of the, I think Oklahoma's one of the few states in the nation that does not have ad valorem taxes. So that does strap us a little bit from a financial standpoint, and it adds a little bit of volatility because sales tax can go kind of like this, as opposed to property tax being very stable and steady. But also, we have our utility billing, water, sewer, trash, stormwater. So since we have unit costs, a lot of what we do is essentially going to be based on the population and growth. More people means more trash, more water usage. So, you know, we look at that as a measurement to figure out how we can look at our costs. Now, you can look at the larger graph and see a lot of undulation, but I did actually pull it out from 1900, and you notice from 1900 to about, you know, 2000, essentially, it kind of levels off. And actually, for the last 10 years, it's been very level. We've had a view, a little bit move up, down, and then up, and we're just over 50,000, about 51.3 right now. So we don't have a lot of that growth coming in that can add to the number of people emptying trash, using water, et cetera.
David, what's the difference between the dark line and the dot, dot, dot?
The dot, dot, dot was essentially a modeled extrapolation. I should have put the form, normally I put the form line there, but it's just a modeled smoothing of the line.
Okay.
So this just goes over some of our trash truck costs, and you can just see some of the numbers. One thing to point out that I've been in discussion with is, we do have sometimes a little issue of a trash truck going down, you know, and not having that extra trash truck. So a lot of times, we'll have a driver sitting around waiting for our fleet people to fix that trash truck. And in my discussions with other landfill and solid waste entities, they have a calculation where there's a little bit more, so there's that extra truck sitting on there so that they can swap it out, and also so that if they need to put a truck in maintenance, it doesn't actually limit them from an operational standpoint. We don't fully operate like that, and it's something we're just looking into. But over time, the cost of a trash truck has just continually went up. And obviously, we want to take care of our employees, so we have salary increases that happen on a regular basis through our collective bargaining, through our union, and you can see that they've gone up somewhat over the last few years. And if you look at just overall capacity or residential drivers over the last about 15 years, 14 years, have increased about 64%. So you can see economic changes since 2012, residential driver pay, how much does a residential cost, a truck cost, and going to 2024. Now, obviously, we went through COVID, and COVID just made everything go crazy, and prices spiked, and a lot of, even our used cars and our leases, they just kind of changed our financial outlook. So some of that does have a relationship to COVID. Hopefully, one of these days, it'll come down and things will stop being so crazy, but I doubt it. Now, this is just a solid waste comparison of all the cities, well, not all the cities, a sample of cities across the state. One thing that you'll notice is, Enid is one of the lowest ones, and actually, if you look at our combined rate, we're second to the lowest. And this is important to understand because not all of these places have landfills that they have to own and operate. Not all these people have the responsibility of adding additional sales and the regulatory costs. So a lot of these people actually aren't seeing the same amount of cost. Now, the flip side of that is, a lot of them aren't seeing the same profit and revenue because they don't have a landfill, but there is a cost balance from the financial standpoint. And I think it is Midwest City, you can see Midwest City is one of the highest ones. They operate a very robust landfill. Tulsa, North Tulsa, and Ponca City also. So you can see a lot of those higher up, higher NP places have a lot of additional costs. A lot of them also have different types of recycling programs that they support with a lot of their fees. So, you know, just cut to the chase, a lot of our costs across the board have increased continually, regularly, over years. And if you look at any type of business, you look at the economy, everything has, increases. We have not actually changed our prices since 2012, I mean, 2012. And that really puts a strap on us, regardless of, with the green cards taking off Monday, that actually took a lot of trucks out of mileage and drivers out. The trash, the green cart conversion did bring us in a little revenue, but not anywhere close to, it was like maybe $15,000 a year. So not a lot of revenue is coming from this. So our main proposal is just to keep up and keep doing what we're doing on a, an efficient way. We're just proposing a $2 increase from $14 to $16. And one thing about this is, it's $2. Most people probably won't even see $2. However, it does create us, create additional revenue for us to do what we need to do and also support the rest of the city as an enterprise fund. And past that, do you have any questions?
Well, I won, like it's been long overdue. I think we're doing a disservice whenever we wait 12 years to do that. And I'm fine with the $2. I don't think that's going to put too much of a strain on anyone, but at the same time, I think we need to consider, and I welcome your thoughts, but, A, automatic escalation like we do on water. Because what will happen is, nobody ever wants to raise rates, even though trash trucks go up by $100,000, you know, or we have an accident with one, it's $94,000. So there's nothing about that industry that is inexpensive.
Yep.
Except the amount that people pay. So I, you know, I'm all for this. I think it's way past due, but at the same time, I think we need to figure out a percentage that every year, every two years, that automatically goes up so that our revenue tries to trend with what's going on. And maybe we do that every year for seven years, and then we stop, we take a look at it. Prices fall back down, I'm okay, you know, taking the escalation off also, but I just don't think we can go 12 years. I don't think that's being good stewards of the people's funds, and in this case, they're a property, right? There are vehicles and there are trucks and the maintenance that needs to be done on those. So that's kind of where I'm at on it.
And I will also add that we are looking at doing a more comprehensive rate cost of service study. Once we get that done, we will actually have a more detailed report on our cost, how much this costs, and a lot of options to maybe increase revenue, change how we do things. So that'll be something we can bring to council in addition to this and say, here's where we are, this is where we'd like to go, but we are working on the RFP for that right now.
We don't take comments during the study session. I'm sorry. Any, any of the Commissioners have any comments, concerns? Thank you.
How are we doing since we cut down on the green cards and everything else when it comes to financial?
I think the main thing, and I may have brought this up during the original meeting, it didn't really bring us up, it brought us closer to even, because I think that's the main thing. We're still, especially with some of the big capital costs that don't show up on our official budget and the big toys that we have to buy, and things like replacing the landfill and building new cells, I would say it brought us closer to even versus it helped us get above that line.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear, David, because we aren't making money by cutting, but you cut staff, you cut the amount of pickups and everything else, and we're not even breaking even.
No.
What about Spark? How would that impact?
Well, I think one thing, we do have potential revenue from Spark, but one thing that did come out, you know, during our initial discussions with Spark, is they had this line of, you know, the potential revenue over time, and when we actually kind of talked to them, and I think it was Commissioner Stallings who brought it up as well, that line is a projected line, and it has error bars above and below. So it could be, you know, the 80 to 120,000 that they were proposing, but depending on, you know, how the landfill acts, it could be higher. you know, how the landfill acts, it could be higher, but it also could be potentially lower. So it will bring us additional revenue, but that's another one that I'm gonna wait to make my judgment until I start seeing, you know, gas coming out of there, and a few checks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, 3.3, update on the Cleveland Street, Cleveland Street widening project. This is a railroad track all the way up to Willow. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm just gonna briefly go over this, the project that we've, you know, been working on for years now, feels like, because it has been years, 2018 is when it started. But kind of give you the update, what we know right now, some of the, some of the definites, and then some of the kind of looks to, look to, to the future, kind of a six-month update. As we recall, this is a widening of Cleveland Street between the railroad tracks and Willow. The project included the relocation of utilities, including one of our water mains, area drainage projects. It included a extension of the, the soccer complex detention pond, as well as a new channel we constructed behind the jumbos shopping center there. And then the project will, will redo the, the railroad tracks there, wind it out to four lanes total, and include sidewalks and trails along, along both sides. This summer, it was let out to bid, and the bids opened. Here's the overall timeline. I won't, you guys have seen it enough times to, to, to know, but the, the key one down there at the bottom, very bottom, is the August 2024 was awarded to, to a contractor. And so now we've had, the contractors had some time to kind of delve into the project, kind of create their plan. And here's what the construction timeline that they provided for us last week. So on November 20, on November 4th, the construction will begin. This will be a no, no traffic impact will be, will be needed. It's gonna consist mostly of the clearing and grubbing, and, which is the getting the grass and, and weeds and trees and all that kinds of stuff removed from, from the surface. Any kind of fence removals, things of that nature, and then dirt work. A lot of this work is gonna happen along the east side of Cleveland there, kind of in the, in the Autry's property there, in their property, but on the Autry side. So that work will, will continue on until, till December 15th, which where there will, Cummins will go into what they call a winter suspension. This is something that ODOT does with contractors during those winter months, December 15th, February 15th, to kind of eliminate the delays. They just, they just say, no more. So, so that happens in January. They, the, the date they gave us was the 10th, but it was kind of, Marley and I kind of went back and forth and just said, the first of the year. That's what, that's when BNSF is gonna start doing some, some of their work that won't necessarily impact traffic along there. A lot of that work's gonna be like running the cables and the wiring and relocating the control box and things of that nature, and still installing the new signal arms and signal posts and things of that nature. So that, no impacted traffic in January. When construction resumes in February, that'd be, start February 15th, that's when Cleveland will be closed at the railroad tracks, basically between Rolling Oaks and Hunter's Hill Drive. This is when the primary focus of, of Cummins, the contractor, will be to get that tie-in basically from the south side of the tracks to the north side of the track, so that, you know, that area where, where the signal arms and mast arms is, is completely done. Because usually that's, as we've learned in the past, you know, the road crossings are what, what cause the largest delays. So they gave us about 60 days is what they told us how long Cleveland would be closed. And then once that, once they get those connections done, Cleveland will be reopened, and the construction will continue on the widening, the drainage and the trails, basically kind of in a two-phase system or two-stage type of project, where they'll be working on the east side of the project first, and then once that's done, they'll move over to, to the west side of the project. So right now, the way it's been described to me is, is no, there'll be no, no road closures in, on Cleveland, no permanent, maybe that's a better way to say it, no long-term closures along Cleveland during that, that portion of the project. That's what I know right now. I included this slide just in case you guys were wondering anything, just wanted to see those numbers again. But, but that's, that's the information I know right now. And obviously, as, as long as, you know, we'll keep you all informed as, as we get informed, so.
Do you recall what the contract time was to complete?
I do not. I wanna say it was summer 2025, but I, I don't remember the number of days or nothing like that, so.
I know we've talked a lot of times about the drainage, right, that's a railroad track on the west side. Is that gonna be fixed during this project? Is that part of this?
Yes, sir. That's, that's that phase that, right here, I didn't mention that, apologize. But that boring's, boring's under, under railroad.
Okay.
They're actually installing, I think, three more pipes or four more pipes underneath the tracks there on the west side.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to know was, how many, and you may not know this, but how many turn-ins do we have, will there be, from Cleveland on to what is Autry's land right there?
I'd, I'd have to look. Gerald, you set me up for that one, and I didn't get, didn't get it looked, but I believe it's two. I think there's one towards the middle of the property, and then one closer to, to the jumbos, uh, jump, closer to jumbos.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
One question, has that house been sold? That was, that's on the east side of that property, right near the tracks on the east side of Cleveland?
Where the trees are?
Yes, sir. Near the trees on the north side of the railroad tracks on the east side of it.
Yeah, not, not that I know of.
Okay. Because I noticed, I know of a sale sign up there when I drove by there the other day.
Really? I hadn't, I hadn't noticed that.
That's the, a little one. A little five acre.
Yes, right.
It's not the big one that goes back to the service center.
Right, right. That's right. I was just wondering if that was gonna be in our way, or?
I wouldn't think so.
We've acquired all the easements and right-of-way we need for the project.
Yeah, yeah, everything's been, everything's kind of been settled out in between that property and, and then the, the property Carol's mentioning there, the one that's kind of back off on the north side of the tracks there. We, we purchased some right-of-way in there to make things happen better, happen smoother.
I did note the same thing you did when I was there over the weekend.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if that's the Dennis Moore Hard Track.
It is, yes.
But it looks to me like he's looking to sell it, so, you know. Anybody that wants a nice new four-lane road right in front of your property is gonna go up, I think.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Item 3.4, discuss codification of the Enid Municipal Code 2024.
Yes. Every 10 years by state law, we are required to cod, re-codify our code. This is a little bit of a snoozer. When the code was in book form only, then this was a big deal because it was printed by a traditional printer, and then you'd have to go through and agonize over things, and it was pretty expensive. And the books were only updated twice a year. So there was time period where you didn't know what the latest updates were. However, most people now utilize the online service, and new ordinances are put on periodically, very quickly, so there isn't that lag time. It remains a important process, and it has taken a long time, about a year, working with the online people to make sure that we've kept up to date with state and federal law. And they have lots of interesting suggestions about the code. Quite a few we've rejected. Just, you know, little nuanced things, you know, the alphabets and the, and the gender stuff. And we've had it in our code for forever, that if it says he, it means he, she. And we suggested that rather than attempting to make everyone happy. It's been there since like 1950. Why change it? Okay. Once approved, and I'm gonna bring it back next meeting, and this ordinance that outlines the, these sections of the code, and once it gets approved, the code people, American Publishing Company, will transition it online. I think it'll take a little longer for them to get the books to us. Their focus is all about online. But we still have to provide books for the city clerk, three cop, she needs a copy, and then three copies in case people want to look at the code. And the courthouse needs copies, and the library needs copies. Of course, I will have copies, and the residents can buy copies, but it is on, it is free online, so we don't buy as many copies as we used to. I will put out a plug for if you want to learn about things. For instance, if you're interested in the law and the statutes, I will put a plug that it is better to get a statute book and turn the pages, because you will find things that are of interest that you won't find if you are just looking for the one thing. Same way with dictionaries. You find all sorts of, if you actually have an old dictionary and you're looking at it, you're gonna find all these cool words that you could use. But if you just plug it in the phone, you know, your results are diminished. And I still, even all these years, every time I look at the code, it seems like I see something that could have maybe done, been done a little better. And we certainly have sections that we are in the process of, you know, we've got the whole Title IX with some of its, with the manufacturing stuff that we're working on, and we probably need to modernize some of the language in our Title XI zoning. And, but we're not waiting to get those done. We will send out the code, and then we'll, when we get those done, we'll, we'll add those. And with the, with the online code, it's pretty easy to stay up to date. That's it. It'll, the ordinance will look just like this, and we have to do it. I expect at some point the state legislature will get around to maybe revising it in light of the fact that the books aren't as important as they used to be. Any questions?
Nope. Don't think so. Thanks, Carol.
You bet.
All right. One last thing, discuss the haunted gym special event. Corey?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I apologize, first off, I didn't bring all the ghouls and goblins to scare you this time, but hopefully the videos will work for you and get you, get you pumped up. So we are starting our haunted gym this Saturday, 6 to 9, and we'll be doing it next Saturday as well, 6 to 9, so the next two Saturdays. Got a, just a few quick videos and pictures here to show you. The, the gym is a little bit scaled down from previous years. It's down to nine rooms inside, but we've left an area inside for people, so they're not waiting outside, waiting in the rain if it's raining, because there is a chance of rain this weekend, so. So nine rooms inside, there's two features outside, and that's really it. It's a free event, as, as all our events are. I'm really proud, and our team's really proud of this one. It's in an area town that we really get a lot of good support from the kids. We usually have an average of about 1,000 to 1,200 kids a year on this, so.
What are the two nights again, of the time?
This Saturday, the, what is it, the 18th, 18th, and we confirm before I give you. 19th, and the 26th. 6 to 9.
6 to 9, okay. So how, how many people are on your team? Did you say that?
There are, there are about, I think we've got 18 this year.
And they're all city employees?
They are city employees. Some are family members of city employees.
Okay.
They're all excited, and they all love doing this. So I would say out of the 20, there's probably 12 employees, and eight of them are family members of city employees, or friends.
Okay. So we were just curious if that clown right there is the one that's been reported on Facebook.
I don't think so. I think he's been there for a while.
Okay, okay.
He's a, he's locked up.
Well, that's certainly a good cause, and I'm, I'm glad your team does that, and, and I, I hope we have a big turnout. Those kids enjoy that.
I think we will. Previous, previous years, we've done Friday and Saturday back-to-back. And a lot of times, it interferes with some football games here in town, so we decided maybe we'll split it a week apart and do it on a Saturday. That might help with it. So, I mean, even then, we were getting, like I said, at least 1,000 kids, so I think, I think this'll help boost it.
Well, it frees everybody up to still be scared or trick-or-treat somewhere else on October 31st.
That's right. That's right. You get a whole nother night.
All right.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Well, with that being said, we will adjourn and start our regular session at 6:30.